Morning.
Morning, everyone.
We're calling to order the October 23, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, seeing all three commissioners present. I will ask Dr. Vestaqui Perez from the Community College to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so welcome. We are just a few weeks away from our November 4 elections, for municipal elections as well as judicial elections across the Commonwealth. So I want to encourage everyone to make sure that they either return their mail-in ballot, there's about 50,000 that are still out there, 50,000 have been returned, or make a plan to vote on Election Day. I'll be doing a town hall tonight. If you would like to dial in and participate, the number will be posted, it's 855-756-7520. Extension 127 to the way, um, you'll post it online. So we'll talk about the process of maintaining the integrity of the election, we'll walk through the security of that, as there are always many questions, how we count them, where we count them, what we do once we've received the tabulation. And we did a couple of these last year before the presidential election, and they're always a lot of fun because, you know, people have a lot of questions about our election process. And although it's an odd year, there are many important races on the ballot, from your school board to local municipal officials and the judges, as I mentioned. I also want to say that Monday was the voter registration deadline, so hopefully everyone is registered. And Tuesday, the 28th, would be the final day to request a mail-in ballot, but you should absolutely not wait that long, because it will take probably a few days for it to get to you. And then either a few days if you mail it back, which would risk your vote not being counted if you do not receive it by APM Election Day. So if you are one of the people who gets a late mail-in, make sure you take it to a Dropbox by APM Election Day, because then if there's any mail delays, we'll still get your vote counted. We've got thousands of people who are on the ballot, including, I should just thank, 428 judges of elections, and we have coworkers supporting them, 2,412 across the county, including 226 students. So thanks to our voter services for making that a seamless process, and there are a lot of trainings that happen, there are going to be even more, once we have new folks working as judges of elections. And they're all here to help their friends and neighbors vote, no matter who they're voting for. So make sure to cash your ballot. Monday, we are having a launch of our AI council, and I bring this up because there was actually an incident, I want to thank all of the school officials at North Penn High School, just talked to the school board president, Kathy, and there was an incident, you may have seen, that a student was found with a gun in the school, and thankfully nothing bad happened, in the sense that no one was harmed. And that's because of the great work and training of our school's security staff and atonement and police department's response, and the DA has already taken action on that. But it's important to recognize that there's a system that North Penn utilizes, not every day, but they're now going to consider how to deploy that system. It's called EVO, then it detects weapons, it's a metal detector, similar to what you would find in an airport, but it specifically finds the density of metal that is likely to be a gun, and it sets off an alarm. So that's the conversation they're having at North Penn tonight, there's a meeting about this incident, and how should it influence policy? But I think it's, you know, it's an example of how we could use technology to keep our kids safe, keep guns out of schools, and making sure that, you know, we don't have an incident like this, which is really concerning to all the parents, not just around in Monco. So I'm looking forward to hearing from the work that North Penn is doing after this incident, because they'll have a whole lot to share with other school districts across the county. So I also want to speak briefly on our county budget. So it's a significant undertaking every year to draft a county budget, and it's even harder now. If you look at every other body in government, there haven't been a whole lot of budgets passed, right? The federal government is shut down, the state government has blown through their budget deadline, and now many of us at the local level are suffering the consequences. Thankfully, in Montgomery County, we've been in a very strong fiscal position, and we've maintained our AAA bond rating, which puts us in the top 5% of counties nationwide in terms of our, you know, ability to withstand, you know, difficult economic events. Right now, we are however spending down some of our fund balance in order to stay afloat, because we're not getting the state funds to run critical programs. Now, we can't do that forever, right? And there are some other counties that are already either cutting services or putting the burden on their contractors to work without pay, essentially. And we haven't gotten to that point yet in Monco, so it's incredibly important that we continue to advocate for our state legislators to get to a sensible budget. And, you know, we've talked about that a number of times, but I think what's important at the same time for us is that we find a way at the county level to work as efficiently as possible, to maintain, you know, our fiscal house in order, so to speak, and do so at a time when people are feeling rising costs, inflation across the board, in utilities, construction costs, healthcare. By the way, those things affect the county as well, right? I mention that because our healthcare alone, for all of our county employees, has gone up nearly 18% in the last two years. Our healthcare plans cost 10% more than we would have anticipated, and that's driven by national trends. And there's also new laws in Harrisburg that are being implemented, or that are being implemented by the county that we have to find funds for, basically unfunded mandates. So we'll hear a little bit about one of those, and some of them are very important things that need to pass. But I say this because there are a lot of costs that are rising, and we are working very hard to find ways to be more efficient. So this year, you may know we created a new office, the Office of Innovation and Strategic Performance, ISP, which for the first time is tracking indicators of performances with each department based and tying that to our budget allocations. So that makes sure that we're actually delivering on our promise to the residents when we are funding particular initiatives, programs, and services. So we've also done a lot to renegotiate our vendor contracts. We had a prescription vendor service with Express Scripts, we did NORI, we've now moved to CBS Caremark, and that saved $1.34 million this year alone. We produce our outside legal spending, we're offering $500,000 by handling more work in-house. We've also done the same thing in our Office of Aging Services by bringing our budget services in-house instead of contracting, that'll save about $200,000. That was on our meeting agenda last week. So that's just a snapshot of the work that's being done across the county by our department heads overseeing, by our leadership of the officials' office, including our CFO, Dendy Raton, our DCOL, Stephanie Tickman. So thank you, of course, for our CEO Lee for continuing to work to find ways for us to keep operating on our, in our own, within our means, to the extent that is possible without state budget or federal budget. So we'll hear more on that soon, and I look forward to having Dean present the budget at our meeting in November. So finally, I'll just say, I'd like to wish everyone in Monco happy Diwali, which was on Monday, but really is celebrated before and after for a number of days through the week. And for those of you who don't know, Diwali is the festival of lights, and it's now a state holiday in Pennsylvania. So I celebrate Diwali with my family in Carbon County first in, you know, very privately, in the sense that there were not a lot of Indian families around, we drive an hour to go to a temple. And here on Montgomery County, it's been amazing, I was at the Bas Temple in Hatfield, the Paraty Temple had a Diwali occasion on Monday as well. And we have 150,000 people who celebrate Diwali across the Commonwealth, and of course a billion around the world. And for those of you who don't know, Diwali is about celebrating hope. It's meant to be a recognition that good triumphs over evil, and that light triumphs over darkness. And if you know the mythology and the epic story, it is meant to recognize a return of Shiva, Rama from 14 years in exile, and the return with Sita, his spouse, to the Kingdom of Ayodhya. This is 2,500 years ago, and it's been celebrated ever since. And so the lights were used as a way to guide them back home. And so when families observing Diwali are lighting candles, it's this idea that no matter how dark it feels, if you find your light, you'll find your way home. And so I just want to wish everyone a happy Diwali. And culturally, there's a commonality I found with my friends in Carbon County and my cousins in India, which is that we all love food, family, and unregulated fireworks is really why Diwali is all about. Yeah, you know that, that's a Northeastern PA staple. But happy Diwali. I'll turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Lider.
Well, happy Diwali to you and your family. Good morning, everyone. Max and I actually spent Monday at the Warriors Ford Library, and we did candle making and celebration. So, so good morning, good to be with everyone today. First, I want to talk about this week, Commissioner DeBello and I attended our Careers for Tomorrow, of Tomorrow, I keep saying For Tomorrow, of Tomorrow Expo in Oaks. It's the fourth year that our Commerce Department and our Workforce Development Board have organized an event, really showcasing the career pathways that are available to the future workforce. We had about 70 local employers, I know the community college is well represented there, including healthcare, biotech, manufacturing, finance, and so much more. We had more than 1,000 young minds at the Career Expo this week, and it represented 27 Monco schools, and they all had an opportunity to explore all of the possibilities for their future. These opportunities to match employers with the next generation of talent, we know, are so valuable. I wish that I had these types of connections when I was in school. We want students to discover workforce possibilities early and often, and I'm just really proud of our commerce team for pulling off such an amazing event. You know, I had the opportunity to meet several students while there, but I met Siani. Siani is a senior in Shelton Weekhem, and she told me that she wanted to be an influencer, she wanted to do graphic design and videography, and so we did, Brian, was it a TikTok? What did we, we did, we did a video together. I couldn't match her energy, but one of the commitments that I made to Siani is that she could come here to Monco and shadow our comms team so she could continue to explore the possibilities for her future. So we will continue to do this event and look forward to next year. So Commissioner DeBello, thank you for being there with me. I think he also did a video as well, I'm just waiting for it to be posted. I don't think it's as good as my video.
We didn't dance.
We didn't, we didn't dance, we didn't dance.
Maybe next time.
In a couple of weeks, on November 6, at the Community College, I'm co-hosting a screening of "The American Delivery," a powerful depiction of maternal health and American health systems directed by a documentary filmmaker who I've had the pleasure of knowing for a number of years, Carolyn Jones. As I mentioned before, this is a part of my personal story, and it resonates with my birth, with my son Max, some five years ago. But I know I'm not alone in the experience of bringing a child into this world and being a healthcare professional that helps women bring children into the world. We know that our maternal healthcare system is in crisis, leaving so many women without care, without dignity, feeling like they don't have a voice. And so this evening will be a really compelling look at America's healthcare system as it relates to maternal health. So I'm really excited that the Sherri Gregg from WHYY will be moderating a panel after the screening of the film. We have a great panel of healthcare professionals, doulas, people that have personal stories to really shed some light on maternal health in this country. So if you'd like to come, it's on November 6, I think it starts at 6:00 PM. You can email our external affairs team, and there's some information on our social media pages to get registered. Next up, we have our October Way to Go winners, and I see several of them in the room. These are county employees who have been nominated by their coworkers for going above and beyond in this important work of public service. Is Adrian Johnson here? Oh, there you are, I thought saw you in the back. Adrian is a constituent service specialist in the Office, the Board of Assessment Appeals, and that's such a fun, such a fun office. Well, maybe not for, maybe not for some people, but I've enjoyed every time I've come to your office. Adrian is kind-hearted face on the third floor. Aside from her actual duties in the BOA office, Adrian is always helping others who are wandering the halls. Thank you for doing that. Compassionately directing people to the PFA office, really good to hear that you're taking time to guide people in their time of need, and always helping others along the way. So congratulations to you for all that you do. Wanda Pacheco? How do you pronounce it? Okay, thank you for correcting me, people always get my name wrong. Is second deputy in the Register of Will's office. Wanda steps up in all areas. She's professional and dependable, and her service for interpreting Spanish at the spur of the moment is so helpful. So we are grateful to you, thanks for all that you do for the county. Last but not least, David Thomas. In terms of who's here, we have two other people. Is your facilities manager for the Public Safety Training Campus in the Department of Public Safety? Dave is always happy to lend a hand with different projects for his fellow team members. His knowledge and experience make maintaining the training campus much easier, and has saved the county thousands of dollars. So David, thanks for all that you do for the county. Jen DeParlo, who is not here, is an inmate services caseworker with the correctional facility. Jen goes above and beyond to help inmates when they are having a problem. Jen is always there to answer questions from newer employees, and makes everyone's day better. And then Carol Morris is a district court clerk for District Court 38-1-23. Carol ensures, oh, that reads wrong. Carolyn is extremely organized and makes sure all of the traffic caseload is effectively managed. Her skills are greatly appreciated when work gets just a little stressful. So congratulations to all of our Way to Go winners.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Sorry, that's okay. Congratulations, thanks for being here.
Right, right here. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
And two more, two more comments for me. On a, on a harder note, we know that a few days ago, the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services announced that because of the ongoing federal government shutdown, SNAP benefits will be paused. This means in November, if the shutdown continues, thousands of families in Montgomery County could lose access to their food benefits, and that would create a real crisis. Right now, about 65,000 residents in Montgomery County rely on SNAP to put food on their table. These are parents, these are seniors and working people, and most importantly, children. Our neighbors, who are already doing everything they can to make ends meet. We know that our food pantries are already stretched thin, federal budget cuts, and the lack of state funding have left them struggling to keep up with the demand. Every time I go to a food pantry, they talk about the year-over-year increase in terms of the needs of families that they see. So if SNAP payments are paused, the local emergency food system will simply not be able to fill the gap. So I just want to implore our federal leaders to arrive at some level of compromise, because we're talking about some real concerns right here in Monco and across the country and across Pennsylvania. But what I want to assure everyone is that Monco stands ready to be there for our friends and neighbors. So this team is working collectively to think about ways that we can stand up and continue to stand up, given the state budget impasse, to ensure that no one in Montgomery County goes hungry. Now, on a lighter note, we've got Halloween coming up, and everybody knows I talk about my little guy Max. Dr. Darby made me dress up for Halloween, she had an event a couple of weeks ago, and for those that know me, I don't, I don't, I like Halloween, I don't dress up for Halloween. But I have a five-year-old at home, so Halloween is a really important holiday in our household. And I'll tell you, as a busy mom, I have not gotten Max's costume yet. So we talked about it on the way to school this morning, he wants to be AJ Brown, so I've got to figure out, in the next week or so, how to find an AJ Brown costume with a helmet and all that. So if anybody has any tips, let me know. Yeah, Amazon's always, always a good, good way. But listen, every, whether you're five or 55, I want to wish you a happy Halloween. It's, it's just a reminder of some of the fun stuff that's still happening in our, in our community. So what is Abi going to be for Halloween?
I know, so he has, it's a high bar, I know.
Are you not saying until?
I'm paralyzed because of how high the bar is. He was, he was in Dropbox last year, which was very cute, he was Dropbox.
He wants, he wouldn't keep the, he wouldn't keep the handle, was it the hat? He wouldn't keep it.
But then voters started putting their ballots, and it was like, don't do that. But he, I think we have a costume, we have a Baby Shark costume, he's just sort of, you know, he's very into Baby Shark.
That's a face, that's a face.
Extremely into Baby Shark.
Good. And Commissioner DeBello, do you dress up for Halloween, is that not your?
No, not this year, but I'm, you left everyone hanging, what did you dress up as?
See, I.
I wasn't allowed to call.
You look on Facebook, you might be able to see it. I was, I dressed up in 80s, I don't even know what I was, honestly. I had like 80s gear on, I had a side ponytail, but I was more showing up for Dr. Darby than there for the costume. All right, I'll turn it over to you.
I gotta, I have to go on Facebook.
Yeah, I know you.
Make it something up quickly on the screen.
No, 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 my page is private.
Just do some AI costume, just post it, be like, this is what I was for Halloween.
That's true.
I do have an Eagles helmet, a retro Eagles helmet to lend.
Okay.
I will sneak it out of my son's room, if you want it.
Okay, maybe I'll keep you up on that.
I can see it being a little oddly on the little plate.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
All righty. So going off of the career for tomorrow, actually, our Commerce Department, after that event later in the afternoon, had a job fair as well, so there's about 50% of or more of the vendors that stayed, they stayed behind. There were over 600 people that signed up to participate in the job fair, so I believe it was a great success, the entire day was a great success. So I look forward to next year as well, to see how well it keeps growing and it keeps getting bigger and better, so I'm sure next year will be even, even bigger. So like, you can tell that as Commissioner, we're very busy, we like to be out in the community. Just yesterday, one of the things that we've been building as Commissioners, we've been going to the different municipalities, we're kind of providing and conquering, and we're passing out the grants that were approved by the county through the Monco 240 program. We give out about $3 million a year to different municipalities, oh, okay, different municipalities for projects that they're doing throughout their communities. And yesterday, I was in Kirk Yoma Township, and we gave them a check for $250,000, that's going towards upgrading or updating their park that they have there. And it's really, it's really great, because they're adding a community garden, a dark, a dark, odd park, a nature background, an outdoor classroom for local elementary kids, and as well as trail connections, road walks through the wetlands. So they're really excited, because it's going to be a big help towards the overall project. I think the township's investing close to $2 million, that we're able to give them a piece of that to be part of that program, to help them. The county, over the last 10 years, has awarded 157 grants to 54 different municipalities, totally $21 million. So it's a great program, and we'll look forward to all the submissions for next year's Monco 2040 grant program. Also, earlier, last week, I went to the Ukrainian-American Sports Club over in North Wales, had their 75th anniversary gala. It was really a great event, very well organized, they're a great organization, and I was very grateful to be able to speak there. They've been, they've been, their main concentration started off as soccer. And just sitting there, part of the evening, they had panels set up going through the history, or going through the past 75 years, and just listening how it all came together 75 years ago. And it was, they had teams there that were actually older adult teams, 18 to 25-year-olds, I think it was, that competed nationally and internationally, and they've had a lot of success, they won all kinds of cups, World Cups, not the World Cup as we know it today, but they, they won all, it's just amazing, listening to history. And then several years ago, they, as they expanded, they incorporated youth sports, youth program, and youth soccer, and the number of teams that they have, boy and girls, and how competitive they are, and how successful they are. And it's just an amazing, so if you're ever over in North Wales, they have a field there, and you know, when, make sure they post schedules and stuff like that, it's great to go over and see the participation, because there's so much history that's associated to that sports club or sports center, and we all look forward to the next 75 years. And we all look forward to the next seventy-five years, all the great accomplishments. I also got the opportunity to go to and spend a lunch with some very young people in Montgomery County. We had our annual Centenarian Lunch. There are people that are a hundred, made it to a hundred years old or older. We have, believe it or not, over three hundred and fifty people in Montgomery County that are a hundred years or older. And they are such a great group of people. We had over twenty-four, twenty-five residents that were able to make this luncheon. And it's just, they're, they're so exciting, they're such a, you would never know that they're a hundred years old because they were, they really were having a good time. They're, they're full, they're still full, ton of energy. They're great to talk with, just listen to the history and the things that they've lived through over the last hundred years. I mean, I, I really enjoy going to that. I went last year as well, and I just want to throw a big thank you out to our HHS team for organizing that. And they, they do such a great job, and I know everyone in attendance really enjoyed, enjoyed the afternoon. And then lastly, we're, I want to announce that on November seventh, we will be having our annual Veterans Month Wine Raising. It'll be here in the corner at the courthouse outside. Our Veteran Services Office, like the state of Monco, is a great place to be a veteran. We work very hard to recognize and support all our veterans here in Montgomery County. So we're proud to give back to the veteran community and give them access to our veteran services that we have here in the county. I mean, they, they so much deserve, everything that we could give plus more. They've done so much for our country, so we should never forget that. I always say, at any time you see a veteran, don't wait for Veterans Day or Veterans Month. When you see a veteran, just shake their hand and thank them for their service because no matter what we think about the country over time, we are where we are today because of our veterans. We are free and we're able to do what we like compared to when we look at other countries. So our veterans play, they have a great sacrifice for us. And I always want to make sure that we thank them, recognize them, and applaud them. Please do that anytime that you can. I think that's it for me.
I would just note, it's November seventh, Friday. It would be, uh, the first question, Friday, November seventh. I will just add one comment on, on the SNAP cuts and hunger. A lot of people are asking this question. We met with a number of faith leaders yesterday, and it came up a number of times. We, at the local level, are doing quite a bit to address hunger, and a lot of our ARPA funds were used to create the infrastructure that will support better delivery to food pantries and meal providers. We have seventy-three different food pantries and meal providers in Montgomery County, and we have a new warehouse that Sheriff Kelly, Sheriff.
Sheriff.
Sheriff is, uh, is getting up and running. It's in Lansdale, it's massive, and it's going to increase our capacity and ability to both, you know, obtain food donations and get them out to the seventy-three pantries across the county. So that's, that was a significant investment from the county to, to acquire that space. And they're still going to need the appropriation of funds, but it's, it's been a focus for us to support. Tony's our resident food expert when Sam is not around. All right, so with that, I will move on to our announcements and presentations. We have our district attorney here, who's going to make a presentation on Drug Takeback.
Okay, thanks. All right, so I'll, I'll kind of stick with the Halloween theme for, for a bit here and, and kind of look at it as horror films and those kind of things. So appreciate a few minutes with you as we get to our, our theme this year for Drug Takeback, A Nightmare on Pill Street, which one of our wonderful staff members, Jill Neal, came up with this year. She puts a lot of time and effort into this, and this is an effort to, to get attention on something that, you know, we're, we're kind of coming off of a horror film, but it's a real horror in our community in terms of what is going on because it's an area where we, we lose far too many people. And Commissioner DeBello, I want you to have a lot more people at the Centenarian dinner or lunch, whatever that was. And, you know, unfortunately, we lose more people each year to overdoses than we are car crashes or homicides. And, and that's, that's why I appreciate this time that you're giving me to, to highlight what's, what's going on. So we have, uh, in a couple of days, on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from ten to two, is our, our event this year. You know, we combine with the DEA Takeback Day, which I guess they'll, they'll be there, although they are a federal agency. So we, we're, we have thirty-seven police departments across Montgomery County participating in this this year. And at these locations, we are, you know, that's, we up that to thirty-seven. We've got four more than the thirty-three that are listed there. I hope some more people will participate in it. We want you to go to our website to, to look at that. So most of this is that, our police departments. Where there are boxes that people can come to, you know, every time of the year, but they make it really easy on this day. Pull up, you have officers standing out there, you know, boxes that they can, they can put the pills in right away. And a number of the departments are also hopefully making it even easier by going to some of the local supermarkets. So we have giant food stores in Willow Grove, Horsham and Stowe, as well as the Wegmans in Upper Providence Township, where people will be able to, to do that. We have the, on our, our website is the list of all the departments that are participating in it. So what do, what do they do, or what do we take on those dates? Tablets and capsules, and that's the, the big one. We want the pills to get out of the medicine cabinets and get destroyed safely. For a long time, we've had over, over prescribing. And when there's pills in these cabinets, kids get access, and this is the, the downward spiral that we've seen over and over again that, that leads to a lot of these other hard drugs and deaths out there. So inhalers, vaping products, creams, ointments, nasal sprays, even pet medicines are, are things that we, that we take on this. And they can drop them in the original bottle or packaging and, and take it to the bins as it. I, I appreciate every year the, the police commitment to this. They are out there doing it, and one of the best parts of the day is when the police pull up to a location that they are directed to go to, and it'll be a line of police cars from all over the county unloading boxes of, of medicine from the Takeback Day as well as the, the, the pill areas that we have regularly there. And, and it's extraordinary. We fill up trucks. We fill up a trash truck with this to then, to, then to safely destroy it. So these, these happen twice a year, and it, it's been extraordinary. So when, since the time we started this, and, and there's some numbers for you. So April of last year, six thousand eight hundred and fifty-three pounds. October of twenty-twenty-four, five thousand five hundred and eighty-four pounds. And, and if those numbers aren't enough, our total count since we started doing this, and we've been doing it a long time now, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand pounds of, of pills. That's the problem that we're facing, and that's why we really need people to do this the right way, get rid of them in a responsible fashion. Don't put them down your toilet because, you know, that gets into the water system and causes problems there. And don't leave them in the medicine cabinets when you don't need them. That's, that's a, a big part of this. We're trying to limit the overdose deaths, and I, I, every time I talk about this, you know, we put numbers up there. These numbers, they are mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, aunts, uncles, and, and, and children. And, you know, we have done, we have done the, the yeoman's work in this area, and I'm really proud of the collaboration because there's no one thing that's been, been the, you know, the reason that this has gone down. It's a lot of different things and a lot of people working together. So last year, you know, we had our lowest number of overdose deaths in a long, long time. Dr. Darby and I stood before you and talked about the twenty-seven percent decrease. That's extraordinary, but it's still too many people that are dying, and this is still going on. We fortunately aren't seeing numbers like, could, could you go back one slide, if, if you don't mind? We're not seeing numbers like we did at, at the, the height of this in twenty-nineteen and, and twenty-twenty. But we're, we're slightly ahead of where we were last year, which to me means we got to keep our foot on the pedal, we got to keep attention on this area. We got to get people aware of this and aware of Narcan and all the other, other things to try to limit these, these deaths. So thank you for going, going back to that. So again, our, our takeback at all these thirty-seven locations. We encourage everybody to take advantage of this time. We're trying to make it as easy as we can for everybody to, to, to get these pills out of your medicine cabinets. But look, if that's not convenient, go to any police department in Montgomery County, walk in the door, and there will be a pill box that is there, and that's twenty-four seven in these, in these police departments. And understand that the police departments are all committed to getting this to us and then destroying them safely. And no, we can't put boxes out at the supermarkets, and we don't want them to disappear. Any questions?
How, how do they get destroyed?
Yeah, so we have a relationship with a, a company where it'll be, it'll be burned and destroyed right there. And it's, it's been great because we do it very quickly, you know, after we get it, so nothing's going around. So if anybody thinks they're going to rob the district attorney, nothing, nothing gobbin' with this. But, you know, everything's secure, and, and again, we do it quickly because we want these drugs not to get into anybody's hands, and we want to save lives. And, and that, that's the reality with this, and that's how serious this is. So, so yeah, we have a, you know, a, an attention getter with the posters that, that we have, and I brought lots of them, so I'll leave them and hope that, yeah, we'll take them and, and encourage people to, to, to do it. But, you know, please, help us get the word out. Again, I appreciate your time, I know how busy everybody is, to allow me to, to shine a spotlight on.
Of course. What's your Halloween costume going to be?
What's that?
What's your Halloween costume going to be? It's going to be that kind?
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's scary enough.
Twenty-four seven. You know, this is how this, this goes, so, so, yeah.
Quick, one more question. You start your presentation off, which is such a key point about the over prescribing.
Yeah.
Do you ever get asked to speak at any type of pharmaceutical community events or anything like that where you talk about the drug takeback and the amount of, I mean, no matter how you slice it, I mean, you started off your presentation.
Yeah, so, so, um, I, I have been invited several times to our medical facilities and speaking to doctors, and, and I, I'm encouraged by it because when you look at some of the problems, doctors for a long time were, were graded on how they treated pain. And, you know, and that's the opposite of, of kind of what they should be doing. And I think there's more attention now in the medical schools for the prescribers on that. And, and we also work very closely with pharmacies to identify if there are people that are out there. It is a felony to change a, a prescription pad. And, and, you know, with, with the way things are going with technology, you know, I think that's helping, and the Attorney General's ability to track this also has been helpful. And there's a lot of collaboration because, you know, I think everybody recognizes how many people we've lost through this. And, and again, you know, appreciate.
Well, I think they would be, I would be, I would suspect that they, they're surprised by the amount of pills and stuff that you're, that are getting turned in, that, you know what I mean? Because it's a high number, which is a good thing.
We've been doing this a long time. I'm shocked every time.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But it's a good thing that we're doing this. I'm just saying, I, it's, it's good to get, we get that information out so they know how much is out there on the street. You know, that you're, that you're able to get back and, and destroy.
Yeah, and, and look, they've over prescribed, right? And then, because otherwise, there wouldn't be all these, these pills that are out there.
Well, thank you for what we're doing.
Hope that, hope that there's, there's more attention on that.
One other question. So for someone who hasn't done this before and might be hesitant to bring their pills or whatever other pills, they just, like, let's say they have a prescription bottle. Are they giving you the whole bottle?
They can.
Just for privacy, I mean.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you the, the process with this. So if anybody has any concerns along those lines. So the, the pills go into a box. That comes to us. We take it, we put it in either the, the box truck or the, or the trash truck, and then we take it and we incinerate it. So this is not getting into anybody's hands. Nobody's going through and looking at the prescriptions or anything along those lines. This is simply, you know, destroying the, the pills. So appreciate the question because if anybody has any reservations, you know, I do it. You know, I put them in. It's got, you know, our family's names on, on things. I'm, I'm not concerned about it getting into anybody's hands.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
No.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next up.
Do you want me to leave the posters?
Yeah. Next up, we will hear our annual update on the Community College from President Dr. Nikki Estacchi Perez. Welcome.
Thank you. Chair of MKEJA, Vice Chair Winder, and Commissioner DeBello. It's an honor and privilege to share our annual report with you and the entire Montgomery County community. We are extremely grateful for your leadership, your partnership, and your support since nineteen sixty-four, when we began as an institution. Together, we've been able, through the decades, to inspire, lead, and transform lives and destinies in Montgomery County, in the region, and beyond. And I look forward to our continued partnership. Next slide, please. For our annual review, there is so much that I could share with you about our students and their success, our graduates, our faculty, staff, administrators, more than ninety thousand alumni, and our community deep partnerships that we have with business and industry, as well as with our private and public sectors. I encourage everyone, if you haven't already, to really peruse the annual review. It's posted on the college website, mcthree.edu, and there's also a. and there's also a QR code there. We are at the middle point of our current strategic plan, 23 to 27, which is Monco for All. So it rallies around us being the community's college for education, workforce development, and cultural experiences, and making sure that we have an environment where everyone belongs within the college. We also have three pillars or tenants for this strategic plan, which all of our work surrounds, and mission centric, ensuring that students are learning, enhancing our employee experience, and expanding our community participation. We have a lot of different accolades this year, and I thank you for inviting some of our national champions to meetings. Our women's basketball team, which had their first championship run in the history of that sport. We also had a national championship for our esports team, which continues to grow. I am now part of the NJCAA E-Sports Presidents inaugural board, helping to inform that play. Five years ago, when we started our program, we had 13 students. Now we have over 200. So it is open to access for all at all levels. And it's not just gaming. It's truly building leadership as well as academics. Also this year, we had the privilege of being the most promising place to work for community colleges. We were recognized nationally, one of 16 community colleges in the entire country of more than 1,000. For the work that we do and our unwavering commitment to a welcoming, inclusive, and supportive environment, not only for our students, but also for our employees, having, everyone having a voice and that voice being valued and heard is critical to our mission and our success. It's the ninth time that we've received that award, and I'm very proud of that particular accolade. Also in our Wall of Fame this year, we had our Reader's Choice through the Times Herald and Lansdarral Reporter. It's the fourth time that our community voted. Montgomery County Community College is the best college or university in Montgomery County. The last three years have been consecutive. Also, the Reader's Choice in the Mercury and the Pottstown area is the fifth consecutive year that we've been recognized again as the Reader's Choice. So it's a testament of the work that we're doing in our communities as well as with our citizens, and making sure everyone has equal access and equal opportunity and whoever dares to dream in Montgomery County. Also this year, we've exceeded our enrollment targets for the second year, almost by 3%, which again, when you're looking at the landscapes in higher education, Montgomery County continues to excel. If you could go back one slide, please. With the Middle States reaccreditation, this is our regional reaccreditation. It's a pinnacle achievement. It was a two-year journey where our students, faculty, staff, administrators, and our entire community external to the college was engaged in a deep, authentic, transparent review of our institution at all aspects, from operations to academics to support services, facilities, financial stability. I am honored to report that through our collective work, we had 13 commendations from our regional accreditor, no recommendations for change, and no requirements for reporting. And this again is because of the passion for purpose and the commitment of our faculty, our staff, our administrators, our Board of Trustees, and all the community that helps to support our success as an institution. Next slide, please. Let's talk a little bit about our students. Our class of 2025, we had more than 1,200 students graduate from Montgomery County Community College with a credential, an associate degree, or a one-year certificate. We still have a large portion of our student body that are first-generation college educated, like myself, that is the first identified in the family to go to college and benefit from a college experience. I understand both personally and professionally what that means for transforming not only my life, but my community, and have a deep commitment to those first gen students. We also have a very large portion of our students that are Black, Indigenous, or people of color. I'm particularly proud of that from an equal access and an equal opportunity. And magnify, not only is this a high number of graduates, it is reflective of their enrollment. So we're seeing our students, our students of color, completing successfully the programs that they choose. Also, our age range, we had a student that was 15 years old, and that is not a typo. They are a high school student that got an associate degree from Montgomery County Community College in May and graduated high school in June and are off to a four-year college or university, junior status, and moving on their pathway. Because everybody's pathway isn't the same. We know that. So at Montgomery County Community College, we have so much differentiation that we're able to provide unique experiences for success for all learners at all stages and phases of life. Our top three programs continue to be liberal studies, which is a transfer program that has general education, as well as areas that students can dabble and to explore their career pathway before transferring to a four-year college or university. The second is business administration. Again, it's a career transfer program where students will complete their program of study at Montgomery and move into a four-year college with junior status. And finally, our nursing program, career-ready. We all know that nursing is a national shortage, a regional shortage, a state shortage, and it continues to be a high priority occupation, one with a high wage for earnings with this credential of an associate degree. I am proud to say my son is part of the class of 2025, and he is on his way and continuing his pathway as a full junior at a Montgomery County college as well. Next slide, please. Chair McKeja asked for some information about what we're doing in the area of artificial intelligence. Montgomery County Community College has always been known as an innovator and ideator and being ahead of the curve on technologies in particular. Looking at our two pillars for our strategic plan for ensuring student learning, we are teaching ethical and responsible use of the AI technology. We're integrating competencies, actually outcomes for courses and programs. We're changing our teaching methodologies and learning assessments so that we can leverage the technology and also make sure authentic learning is taking place, not only vertically, but horizontally in the classroom. Also, we're preparing students with technologies for career readiness. Because as you can imagine, in the three programs that I mentioned previously, liberal studies may have different needs than a nursing student in use of this technology. So we have to make sure as students transition to the workforce and transfer, that they're able to be equipped with using AI appropriately. And then finally, the societal literacy. What are the guide rails and safeguards and things that students should be thinking about as a citizen with application for AI? For enhancing our employee experience, there's a lot going on with our workforce through professional development or our faculty, staff, and administrators, whether we're skilling up or hiring other talent to help support and to help us continue to evolve and grow. Changing systems and having investments in various systems. We were an early adopter of a AI bot. Years ago, we call them Monty Chat. If you go onto our main page, Monty Chat is there. And that bot is actually being replaced, upgraded, and evolving. We have an employee AI agent that is helping. We are piloting it to help answer questions for employees about their HR questions, about their benefits, about IT and use of technologies. We also are exploring a personal AI that can help an individual better collate and present materials, bring presentations together. That particular project is temporarily on hold because of the privacy issues that we uncovered because the AI can't differentiate between personal information and professional information. So we're looking at that. In our learning management system, Canvas, we are using a tool that helps to look at student success metrics within the student learning platform and help us support students with additional resources, whether it's tutoring, advising, mental health services, and if they're in crisis, to be able to get them what resource they need through our partnerships. Another example with our employee experience is, as you can imagine, we have about 12,000 students a year we serve at Monco. We have a lot of transcripts that come in, whether they're high school transcripts, transcripts from other institutions. So we're working to vet products that help with AI to not only read transcripts and transcribe them to our system, but also to provide students with what-if scenarios. So looking at the programs and the high priority occupations we have here in Montgomery County, looking at the multitude of transcripts and saying, you know, you've taken all of this coursework. It looks like you're interested in computer science. If you take these few classes, we can get you a credential, a certificate, or an associate degree to move on to your desired outcome. Next slide, please. Unlocking Opportunity, we've been selected one of 55 community colleges through a very competitive process with the Aspen Institute College Excellence Program. And it's called Unlocking Opportunity. And the best way to describe what this is about is about systematically changing the fabric of our institution foundationally. When you look at community colleges, we began as access institutions, providing great access. In the 2.0 version, we talked about access and continued that work. It talks about completion, getting people to graduate. Very important. In this 3.0 model, we're not only looking at access and completion, but the key piece is post-college success. So what does that mean? That student has a credential that they can move into a career like nursing with a living wage here in Montgomery County, and no employment will be available to them. If they're in the transfer pathway, that when they transfer from Monco, their added value is that they have the lowest level of debt and that the most credits transfer, as I described previously, at the junior level. So we're not repeating time, energy, and effort, but moving along that pathway. So we will be strengthening our academic portfolio, both credit and non-credit programs, to align with these high-demand, high-paying career paths and priorities in Montgomery County. So I just wanted to give you a little recap of that. And the outcome will continue to be economic and social mobility for all. Next slide, please. And finally, I encourage everyone just to stay connected with us. We're on social media. We have podcasts. I have a president's report. We have a robust website for information. Remember, Montgomery County Community College is the community's college. It is your college. It is our college. It is part of this ecosystem that provides belonging for all through education, workforce development, and career opportunities. And I thank you for your time and your attention. And I tried to stay within five minutes.
Thank you. One thing I'll just note on a personal note. Mike knows this, but when I got to see firsthand the podcasting studio in the college, and we recorded our film, which won the Emmy at the community college with the help of a student who's doing the sound mixing. So hopefully there are many more awards that come out of that room in the future. But it was a great, you know, great to see that students are, you know, engaged in all the creative things that they're doing at the college. Really appreciate that.
And I appreciate you bringing that example forward because that's a keen focus area for us. Whether you're in a career program or a transfer program, that you have direct application, hands-on, applicable skills related to your field of study. So however, we can do that through internships or classroom engagements, integration with various departments. We have, in our IT area, we have interns, that are student-paid workers that work in that area to get real-world experience. So these are opportunities that are available. And I thank you for noting that.
Of course, thank you. Any questions?
I would just, just a comment. Thank you for your continued leadership. It's been great to sit on the Board of Trustees and just see the diversity of programs and efforts that you have going on. You have an amazing leadership team. Thanks to Mike for always being so responsive to us anytime we make the call and want to do something at the college. I just want to note that James is a current Monco student. Stand up, James. Don't try to stand up, James. So I met James when I was just speaking to a class last year. And he's now one of our interns in our external affairs department. So just really grateful for the opportunity that you're creating for people like, like James. So I know he graduated. Don't you graduate? Don't you graduate? In December, so, yeah.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we'll hear from Nelly Menez on our team.
Yes.
Polish American Heritage Month.
Good morning. Today, we celebrate Polish American Heritage Month, honoring the rich traditions and contributions of Polish Americans. We have a special guest. Thank you, David, for coming, his father, and a couple of people from the poor. This month is about recognizing the legacy of Polish immigrants from Jamestown in 16A to today. They helped shape American history. It's a time for reflection, education, and celebration through festivals and community events. Polish Americans have influenced science, arts, and public service. They have served in the armed forces, led communities, and fought for workers' rights, leaving a lasting impact on US progress. Polish culture thrives through food, music, such as polka and choppy work, and vibrant festivals that keep traditions alive. But to make this celebration even more special, we are honored to have the president of Saint Mary's Polish American Society to share a little bit about their work preserving Polish heritage. David?
Good morning, everyone. My name is David Shvetkovsky. I'm Executive Director of Saint Mary's Polish American Society. So I don't want to take up a lot of your time, especially since my parking meter is about to expire right now. Saint Mary's Polish American Society formed 10 years ago by a group of former parishioners and friends of Saint Mary's Catholic Church in Konczahakan, which was the first Polish parish here in Montgomery County in response to the threat of Saint Mary's being permanently closed and demolished after it was merged with multiple other parishes in the area. Inspired by the example of our ancestors who came from Poland to Konczahakan and sacrificed so much to build and sustain Saint Mary's as their beautiful spiritual home in their new homeland and beacon of their beloved Polish heritage in the community for so many years, our group was determined to do everything that we could to keep Saint Mary's open as a functioning sacred space for generations to come. Through donations, polka dance fundraisers, and a lot of prayers, including a weekly novena to Our Lady of Chenzehova, Saint Mary's Polish American Society covered all the expenses at Saint Mary's Church during the years when it was closed until the Archdiocese of Philadelphia invited the Priestly Fraternity of Saint Peter to come to Saint Mary's and assume care of it in 2018. Since its reopening, Saint Mary's has become home for the traditional Latin mass in the Archdiocese, and now has close to 1,000 people attending Mass there weekly, including many young families. Saint Mary's Polish American Society has continued to promote Polish heritage in Montgomery County while also raising funds for capital improvement projects. County while also raising funds for capital improvement projects at Saint Mary's, including helping to put a new slate roof on the church. Saint Mary's Polish American Society has an annual Christmas food sale, Easter sale, and raffle, both of which are going on right now, actually, so if anybody wants raffle tickets or wants to order food, come see us, as well as a scholarship program awarded to one student of Polish American Heritage each year. We're always open to collaborating with other organizations and expanding our programming. So as we stand here during this Polish American Heritage Month, 10 years after first setting out to do the impossible and save Saint Mary's, we can't help but remember the dedication and deep faith of our ancestors and be grateful for the example they gave us of love of God, love of family, and love of their Polish heritage, which they passed down to us, and the fearless sense of determination and duty which we carry with us in all that we do. So dziękuję bardzo, thank you very much, and have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
So thank you so much, David. Thank you for coming. Thank you for all of your guests that came today. And without further ado, I would like to invite you to receive accommodation and also permission to celebrate Polish Heritage Month. So, let's.
Thank you for having us. Thank you.
Go, go.
Right, we're going here. One, two, three. Hey.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I feel I know.
Share a lot of things, yeah.
Okay. We'll move on to the first public comment period of the meeting. This is only for comments related to today's votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts. Are there any comments?
David Morgan.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm David Morgan from Ampler, and I'm interested in commenting about the Agenda Item B, Page 3, where we have an update about the Justice Center on top of the page, and I'm seeing it's $31 million and change, about $35,000 higher, but it's some information for the taxpaying public to know this is part of the capital budget. This will be addressed very soon by the Commissioners, and I have been told often in the years that the Justice Center should be costing $415 million, and we haven't had an update for a while. So this at least is part of the design, which is ongoing, the design keeps going, over $31 million. So as taxpayers, hopefully all of these items of the county campus plan can be defined well for us, because I know there's items related to this building, the courthouse across the street, the Justice Center, and how all of these are going to have pressure on higher taxes, because basically I see acceleration in our taxes. I have a little graph here, but I have other ones I've done, and so we've gone from millet rates around the threes up to 5.2 if you look at line A of your tax bill. And there's a part with the community college, which is always not accelerating, it's always the same. They managed to do well with that and have a fine program. So I just would like to have the Commissioners tell us as much as possible about these capital expenses, so we are really prepared for what we have to pay as we come to a new year. And have the Commissioners seen the Justice Center new building? Have they been inside it? Have they gone, had a tour? And what's it like? Are the courtrooms properly sized and everything seem to be well-using, the space and the utilities? So this is an area of concern for, for us. I'll talk about general items in my next comment, but this is a specific item on the agenda that's going to be voted, and we at least have the design part. But all the rest of it, and how it's used, and maybe blueprints, anything like that we can know, so we know we're having a good use of our taxpayer dollar. I thought we were discussing about eight months ago that this would be more settled in different buckets of money, as I mentioned last meeting, so we'd like to see that it's better defined, and maybe this large building is completed with a good idea of a cost to us. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to, sorry, when you, when you say the $415 million, that's not, those numbers aren't accurate as far as, there's three phases, so are you talking about all phases combined, or are you talking, because the Justice Center, the new building is Phase 2, so when you, when you mentioned $415 million, what are you referring to? Because I, you brought a lot of good points, and we do, we aren't planning on having another Justice Center update, but I just want to, the numbers that we put out there, I want to make sure are accurate.
Yeah, $415 million, I've been mentioning over a couple of years now, and perhaps Mr. Zlatyja can address that number with me, and we talked about, I thought it might be into the $600 million at one time, so will we really know that that is one part of the county campus plan, and it could be fine for us, it'd be really great.
Yeah.
Great. Any other comments?
Yes, on Zoom, Holly Polak. Holly?
Polak, I need to be in the second comment period.
Great, thank you. Okay. We'll move forward with the agenda, moving on to Section F, Approval of the Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the October 9, 2025 meeting minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Moving on to our personnel list, we'll hear from Tony Brew, our Chief Human Resources Officer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. You have in front of you the final copy of the Commission Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated October 23, 2025, with a timestamp of 12:28 p.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for, for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the October 23, 2025 personnel presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment?
A second, though.
Oh, sorry. Second by Mr. Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The personnel presentation is approved. Thank you. Moving on to Section I, Bids and RFPs. Is there a motion to approve the advertisements, bids, and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
A second, though.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Moving on to our personnel list, we'll hear from Tony Brew, our Chief Human Resources Officer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. You have in front of you the final copy of the Commission Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated October 23, 2025, with a timestamp of 12:28 p.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for, for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the October 23, 2025 personnel presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment?
A second, though.
Oh, sorry. Second by Mr. Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The personnel presentation is approved. Thank you. Moving on to Section I, Bids and RFPs. Is there a motion to approve the advertisements, bids, and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
A second, though.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved. Moving on to Section J, Contracts. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments?
Mr. Chairman, I've just some context on Mr. Morgan's comment on that amendment for the Justice Center. Ultimately, that amendment will save the county money long-term. That was a redesigned amendment for a small portion of the building that was changed during COVID, frankly, after the building was already designed. We redesigned the space after some efficiencies were found with hybrid work and moving some people around, so we were able to change one part of the building to get the District Attorney's Office into that building where they weren't originally anticipated to be. So this redesign gets them into that building and saves the county from needing to buy, rent, or lease other space for the District Attorney's Office, which is great.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Moving on to, let's see, there's no, no regional task force this week? Nothing? Okay, so moving on to general public comment. Any commenters?
Vincent Sopinski.
Excuse me. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you. I want to make a few comments on the proposed, well, we're moving toward the '26 budget, and we'll be looking at that next month, and I just want to kind of make a few comments about the process in '25 and put some thoughts out there, what we may be thinking about for '26.
Sure. Just a quick question. Can you just say your name and township?
Sure, I'm sorry. Vince Sopinski. It's an "I" at the end, with Payne Township. Thank you. You're welcome. In the '25 budget, I went back a year ago just to review the comments that were made regarding approval of that budget. As you all know, that's a 9% increase for taxpayers in Montgomery County. That followed a 13% increase in '24, and that in turn followed an 8% increase in '23. So cumulatively and aggregate, that's a 33% increase over a three-year period. Now, if I went back further, it'd be larger than that, but I'm just talking about the last three years. So as we think about a 9% increase this year, that's three times higher than the current rate of inflation. Now, as I dug a little deeper into some of the numbers from some of the media-publicized comments from that budget period, personnel costs were identified as a major area, about a $37 million increase in '25 over '24. It's a fairly significant increase, 14.5%. That's five, five times the current rate of inflation, five times the current rate of inflation for our personnel costs in 2025. That's a significant increase, so we have to ask ourselves, why is that? Why did it go up five times the current rate of inflation? Well, apparently pension was one of the issues there, and the other was insurance. Commission, you had commented on and worked on the insurance part of that process this year. Apparently, Montgomery County is self-funded, and therefore you have a stop-loss vendor as well. That was just approved in the minutes now, and you did bid that business, which is the right way to go about that. But I would argue that isn't the only way to do it, nor is it the end of the process. For example, were your consultant or brokerage partners RFPed? Did you seek RFPs through your broker commission or your consultants? When I looked at the stop-loss vendor you chose, it evidenced in your write-up that the broker recommended them. Was that competitively bid? Was that stop-loss contract competitively bid, $2.5 million? That's a lot of money, a lot of money, and having spent, gosh, probably close to 40 years in this business, that's unusual. So I would suggest that we go back and revisit some of this stuff fairly aggressively, because that represented 4.8 million of the 37 million personnel costs in 2025. Now, the pension plan represented 30 million of that 37 million increase in personnel costs. So my only comment there, I'll be real brief here, is have you looked at 401Ks or 403Bs for the employees here? Has anyone considered that as an option? Everybody's doing it in the public space, for sure. It's a little rare in government, but it's something we really should look at, because that's a significant, potentially a significant cost-saving. So I guess my time is up, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your comments, and I do believe the benefits consultant listed in RFP, do you want to add?
That was competitively bid, and we saved approximately $200,000 this year, or going into next year, on that bid by putting it out.
That was the healthcare bid or the stop-loss?
The stop-loss.
Oh, the stop-loss.
Stop-loss. Okay.
That's good to know.
Got it. Yeah, your other comments are all favorable. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
Preston Lutwiler.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Preston Lutwiler from Limerick Township, and I just want to say on Saturday, on the 18th, my wife and I and about 1,000 or more other Montgomery County residents who are right outside the windows out here for a No King's Day celebration, demonstrating peacefully. And I want to thank you for the hospitality and the safety that was provided by Montgomery County staff for that event peacefully, and that wasn't the only event in Montgomery County. There was one in Pottstown, then there was one in Harleysville, and probably half a dozen others protesting peacefully against policies and administration in DC that we did not vote for in Montgomery County, by 310,000 votes for another candidate to 194,000 for what we have received. So I just want to thank you for helping make those demonstrations peaceful and just express my disappointment that you are dealing with the fallout of a government shutdown that has eliminated SNAP benefits, which you're having to step up and try to fill those holes, and also a state government budget failure, which has gone on for over 100 days now, which is affecting SEPTA and affecting your own budgets. So my apologies for what you're going through, and my hope that there can be resolution for these things so that you can get on with the business of the county, which I think you're doing very well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kristi Yingling.
Hi, I am Kristi Yingling from East Norton, and I am once again here asking the Commissioners to pass a welcoming policy for Montgomery County. Regardless of how you may feel about immigrants personally, we need them. Pennsylvania's economy depends on immigrants as workers, consumers, entrepreneurs, and taxpayers. They also make us safer. Data show that immigrants consistently commit fewer crimes than U.S. foreign residents, and on average, neighborhoods with more immigrants have less crime, especially when they're not the targets of crime. They also enrich our culture by sharing their food, music, art, ideas, and way more. We should be doing everything in our power to make this a county where immigrants want to live and stay long-term. But even if we didn't need immigrants or benefit from them greatly, we should still care about them. How we treat vulnerable members of society says a lot about our humanity. I don't want my friends, neighbors, coworkers, or even strangers to live in fear of ICE's aggressive and unconstitutional behavior. Immigration laws can be enforced without racial profiling, grabbing people off the street, tearing families apart, and detaining... So I just want to thank you for helping make those demonstrations peaceful and just to express my disappointment that you are dealing with the fallout of a government shutdown that has eliminated SNAP benefits, which you're having to step up and try to fill those holes. And also a state government budget failure, which has gone on for over 100 days now, which is affecting SEPTA and affecting your own budgets. So my apologies for what you're going through and my hope that there can be resolution for these things so that you can get on with the business of the county, which I think you're doing very well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kristi Yingling?
Hi, I am Kristi Yingling from East Norton. And I am once again here asking the Commissioners to pass a welcoming policy for Montgomery County. Regardless of how you may feel about immigrants personally, we need them. Pennsylvania's economy depends on immigrants as workers, consumers, entrepreneurs, and taxpayers. They also make us safer. Data show that immigrants consistently commit fewer crimes than US-born residents. And on average, neighborhoods with more immigrants have less crime, especially when they're not the targets of crime. They also enrich our culture by sharing their food, music, art, ideas, and way more. We should be doing everything in our power to make this a county where immigrants want to live and stay long-term. But even if we didn't need immigrants or benefit from them greatly, we should still care about them. How we treat vulnerable members of society says a lot about our humanity. I don't want my friends, neighbors, coworkers, or even strangers to live in fear of ICE's aggressive and unconstitutional behavior. Immigration laws can be enforced without racial profiling, grabbing people off the street, tearing families apart, and detaining or removing people without due process. The cruelty is the point here, and I want Montgomery County to show that we're better than that and we can do better than that for our people. Thank you.
Linda Weaver?
Good morning. Linda Weaver, Limerick Township. I want to address the upcoming election on November 4th. It is an experience I relive every election day. And I want to tell you what happened to me at my polling place. I'm a volunteer outside of my polling place in Limerick 5. And several elections ago, as voters come up, we asked them if they want a sample ballot. One of the voters said to me, Republican or Democrat? And I said, Democrat. He came up to me and put his finger on my forehead like he was pointing a gun at me. And he pulled the trigger and he said, "The only good Democrat is a dead Democrat." That is what I faced as a volunteer at a polling place. So I implore everyone, turn down the rhetoric. And by the way, I was alone at the time because my husband and I are the only ones that will work that poll because it is known to be an ugly poll, maybe even uglier in the past by the opposing party that would rev up their voters as they came in. So my husband went home to let the dog out. And so unfortunately now, we can never be alone at the poll. I've talked to the county sheriff about what happened. He indicated that he will keep officers within one or two minutes of our polling place. But this is not what I voted for. And I asked my Republican friends, is this what you voted for? And I want everyone to think very carefully about that as we approach the election day. The second thing I want to comment about is I was one of the 1,500 people standing out here on Saturday. And I just wanted to be known, I follow a lot of social media sites on the old parties, independents, Republicans, and Democrats. And I want everyone to know, I am not a paid demonstrator. I'm not getting a $200 check. I'm looking for it, but I'm not getting it. And I want to tell you, I am a 73-year-old retired teacher. I taught children of special needs for 42 years. And I am outraged at what is happening in our country. I thank our county commissioners who are trying to keep us safe here. But as I watched part of my house, the people's house, being torn down after that demonstration on Saturday, seeing that, I just wanted to ask them again. And I called people up that I know are Republicans and voted for that. And I asked them, is this what you voted for? Ask them.
David Morgan?
I'll just actually say one comment regarding your experience at the precinct. We are working very hard to train all of our poll workers on the right contacts to have at the ready so that no one experiences what you had to experience in terms of threats or intimidation or harassment. That has no place in our democratic system and certainly not in the precinct. So I'm sorry you had to deal with that. And, you know, we're working hard. Our voter services is making sure everyone's trained so that we can respond appropriately.
David Morgan, I'm Ambler. And I thank Commissioner Winder for her mentioning of the American Delivery Event, WHYY, for the event on number six. And I unfortunately can't make it because I'm playing at a concert. But that's really great that we help guys in Monco Mamas, the successful birth experience, so we have more of our young citizens. And so I think it's really good also that we have this, as I mentioned before a couple of times. I did go to see a walk for the Pregnancy Resource Centers, and they said they had 10,000 visits last year. And it was really nice that they know about this for sure. They know the county has this out. So it's great to have that circulated. It's an act of kindness, valuing the youngest humans. Regarding the elections coming up, do the judges value the youngest humans? Is a question we can ask ourselves. Are they showing that they really want to have these newest citizens have a successful delivery? And so I think that having this commitment towards the youngest and committing to marriage is a great thing to encourage in our county. And I thank Commissioner DeBello for having this form expedited to be out for everybody in the back table if you want to get one. It's in Spanish as well. And also going back to the budget, I think we have to realize that a lot of people don't see the bill maybe so clearly just going to escrow. The county tax is coming up. And so to be seeing the rate of increase, I had a chart I made earlier in the year which shows if you see that multiplying is going on, not just adding up percentages, but multiplying, that we're going to a 51.84% over the year for 2020 going to 2025. Those changes are going on in the top line of your tax bill. Not the both lines, the community college, but just the top line. That's the one I call the rocket. It just tends to fly up high. And so that means renters, your rent is going to be affected by high spending in the county. And some counties are trying to have zero increase. We heard Norristown School District had zero increase, mentioned last year, last meeting. And so if we can have it be that, if you look at the top line, not the combined line, which is nine or so, I get 9.69, almost 10%. The 13 and 10 are the hardest to face because they're on a higher base. So if our taxes have been going up, then the base to start is already much higher. Then you add 13, and then you add almost 10, say nine, even if you like to say nine. Then that really is making it hardest for all our people to afford the rent, to afford their mortgage, seniors. So there's the aspect of the county wanting to help. But we're also counting on burden if we have that balance as a bound. I think it'd be really good. And I appreciate Commissioner DeBello's office for innovation. As long as it's cost-effective, we're trying to get some savings. And thanks for the savings you mentioned earlier in the meeting.
Thank you.
Ed Moy?
My name's Ed Moy. I live in Western Orange in Township. I'm here for the same reasons last time. I'm speaking about the penalty of not assisting our federal law enforcement officers and possibly reversing that. And before I go on, the person who said that to you, ma'am, this 73-year-old retired teacher should have been arrested and possibly charged. I don't know if the constable has that power at the polling stations, but they should, if they don't, they should either. But I'm here, as far as immigration, that the young lady who spoke before and said that we need migrants or immigrants, yes, we do. We need legal ones. We need legal ones because we know the ones that are here legal, they've got more skin in the game. Of course, hopefully they commit less crimes and do things that are less detrimental to our society. But the legal ones, this is low-hanging fruit. Headline, "The Legal Immigrant Truck Accused of Fatal Prison" that was released by the Biden administration in 2022, border crossing. This is in California, not in Florida. This one. "Breaking: Illegal Alien from Venezuela Being Harbored by Governor Pritzker" in Illinois was just arrested for committing four-home invasion rapes, has been arrested five times since June while on pretrial release under the DA Pritzker's status bail system. Now, I'm here because I would really like, as I said, to get that reversed and for the people in this country, not just our county, but to stop attacking these law enforcement officers. I'm retired law enforcement, for those who don't know. And yes, I'm going to stand here every month and say this to help my brothers if I can. The DA spoke about pills and overdoses and fentanyl. Most of the fentanyl came into this country through the southern border, through illegal aliens and drug dealers. Violence against the ICE officers, I'm sure, well, if you guys haven't heard, up over 1,000%. They're getting hit with rocks, stone, blunt objects. Cars, there was a couple of car chases that I've seen in the news lately. And they've been shot at, one of them was shot in the neck. I don't know if he's totally recovered yet. As far as our government, as I said before, the known duty of our government is to keep the people safe. A Christian theologian said this, "God wasted no time introducing the all-important concept of government in scripture. Doing so in the very first chapter of Genesis 1, 26 through 28." That's where it says the man, Adam and Eve, take dominion of the land, the birds of the air, etc. His name is Dutch Heath. Also, in my opinion, just to finish up, we are not as safe as we think we are being part of law enforcement. If I were, especially if I were to testify in court, I'm sure the attorney's room knows that I would be considered an expert witness. I believe I am an expert in security. And our nation will not be secure until we have people like this off the streets. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Rabbi Elise Weterman?
Good morning. It's good to see you. I haven't been able to be here since the summer, but I'm happy to be here again. And Shiva Diwali to you, Commissioner. Happy Diwali. I'm here today to reaffirm my strong support for adopting a welcoming policy for our county offices and our programs. I'm grateful for the work that you've already done and for how much you have stood with immigrants in your personal selves and for what you've said and written. But there's still more to do. I also want to address how the issue is being framed. Too often, it's described as a conflict between those who support law enforcement and those who don't, or between those who love this country and those who don't. That framing is false. Those of us advocating for a welcoming resolution are deeply committed to the rule of law and to the principles enshrined in our Constitution. As Thomas Paine wrote in 1776, "In absolute governments, the king is law. In free countries, the law ought to be king." From our founding, we've affirmed that in the United States, the law is king and no one is above it. Our justice system has not lived up to that promise, in no way. But until recently, I thought we had all agreed that due process, equal protection before the law, and innocence until proven guilty were the foundations of our democracy. These are partisan values. They're American values. So how do we get from that shared commitment to a reality where unidentified agents raid grocery stores? Where children are pulled from their beds and zip-tied? Where individuals are put on planes in the middle of the night against court orders without process? Where people are indefinitely held in unregulated private prisons? Some claim that only criminals are being taken. It's simply not true. And even if it were, this is not how justice is done in this country. I know that you, as county commissioners, cannot change federal policy or stop ICE from operating here, but you have the power to draw a line and stake a claim. You can affirm that in this county, we will uphold the Constitution, protect due process, and refuse to participate in actions that violate those principles beyond what the law requires. You can show your support for law enforcement, who ICE also supports, by making it clear that the people who serve in our communities will not be co-opted into doing work that erodes trust and instills fear. Adopting a welcoming resolution can set an example to the townships and boroughs to follow, enabling them to enact welcoming policies. Earlier this year, you encouraged us to take this argument to the townships. Many of us have done just that. Last night, Cheltenham Township unanimously adopted a welcoming policy. Looking at the three of you, you represent what's best about an inclusive democracy. A child of immigrants and civil rights attorney, a descendant of American slaves, an advocate for women's health, a businessman whose ancestors came here from elsewhere. This is what our country could look like. This is what is possible when we continue to build a nation where there is no king, but there is indeed law. Thank you for your time.
Harley Taylor? Harley Taylor?
Rabbi Elise is a very tough act to follow. I had a script that I was prepared to come up here and talk about. And the last two people, as my daughter would say, I'm shook. I hope that we can all come together and talk about how we can make our community feel safe to all of us. I also am a poll worker. I haven't had the same experience. I'm sorry that you have. On November 5th, I woke up. Let me back up. When I moved into my neighborhood four years ago, I honestly was a little bit relieved that I moved in across the street from a police officer. I'm a single mom. Scary. But on November 5th, I woke up wondering which neighbor might report me? Because I'm a Democrat? Or because I'm an outspoken advocate? Or because I'm like a menorah in December instead of putting up a Christmas tree? Sorry. I recognize that I get to walk around looking like as I do. People don't know who I am and how I identify in all the ways that they could report me. Sorry.
It's okay.
The highest court in the land has said that it's okay to discriminate against people based on the color of their skin. Are we going to bring back the paper bag test? Are we going to bring back hatches? Saying that I'm Jewish? Nobody should have to wonder these things in America. Nobody should have to wonder if you are going to report me because I came here and spoke up, used my First Amendment right to speak up for immigrants, for people who don't look like me, for people who come from different countries. I'm not advocating for criminals. I'm advocating for my neighbors.
We're moving on to Zoom now. We're going back to Holly.
Good morning. Holly Pollock, Lower Frederick Township. As a resident of Montgomery County, I encourage the Commissioners to pass a welcoming policy. As we can see from today's presentations, we are a diverse community and should have policies that publicly support that diversity and strengthen our community. Thank you.
On to Stephanie Wu. On Zoom. Stephanie?
Hi, this is Stephanie from the North Wales Township. I'm so saddened by the comments previously presented. Honestly, I am a legal immigrant of 30 years. Ever since I came here, I worked nonstop, always paying my taxes, worked very hard to support myself, my family, and for the charities that are worthy causes, such as orphans and community youth and those who fall into financial hardship due to sickness, layoff, or other legitimate reasons. So I am here to speak for the many legal immigrants like myself, urging our government, our policies to support the enforcement of immigration law and support ICE agents who are doing so. As a legal immigrant and someone coming from a communist country, it hurts to see the decline of American society in the past decade as it turned more and more to the socialist communist direction. The America I first arrived at is a place where people are kind, honorable, and law-abiding. The government was the same, or at least appearing so. Yet today, we even have to debate whether the fundamental law of keeping the nation safe, keeping the law as it is, should be enforced or openly defied. I strongly urge the board and all levels of our state and local government to support expelling of illegal immigrants and uphold law. Not doing so is indeed disrespect to those law-abiding citizens, legal immigrants like me. We pay taxes, we work hard and endure hardship not to fund for those who has no respect and love for this nation and its law. Giving the illegal immigrants a free pass is a blatant injustice and hate against illegal immigrants. Ten years ago, I also applied for immigration for my only sibling. I have not heard of anything ever since the first note of receipt. That's about it. By resisting the enforcement of expelling illegal immigrants, you are, are you encouraging everyone like myself to pursue illegal route? Meanwhile, it diminishes the hope, the funding and the resource for those who are patiently waiting to enter this country legally. Would you yourself be content when hundreds and thousands cut into the line before you and your children and your grandchildren when you're waiting at your favorite restaurant or at the Eagles game? Worse yet, would you be happy to pay the bill for the thousands who are cutting before you and your children? Not to mention, many of these have a hate and despise against their, you and your family, this country, because their loyalty and the first party is somewhere else, whether their birth country or their birth religion. Not say that they shouldn't have some loyalty, but that's not their first, shouldn't be their first loyalty. I understand there is always exception and extra grace needed for those who truly need the pardon, such as a death-threatening farmer from South Africa, a religious persecuted pastor from China, or a direct family member of one who's terminally ill and all alone. But the beauty of true American values-
Kaylee Taylor.
I don't know if people on Zoom can see, but we have a timer just to make sure everyone gets a chance to make their comment as well, but it's three minutes.
Kaylee?
Hi, yes, thank you. So I'm Kaylee Taylor. I am from the proud Cheltenham Township. I was there last night when our commissioners voted for the welcoming policy. I'm also a mother and I'm a practicing therapist. And I work very closely with an immigration attorney. And the facts that are being presented in regards to who is being snatched is not accurate. A lot of these individuals are trying to seek legal immigration status and are being thwarted because of different things going on. Specifically recently, the government shutdown has halted that process. The other thing is, is that snatching people up is not due process. We are innocent until proven guilty, but these people are not being given their opportunities. We need to adopt a welcoming policy. Cheltenham is not the only township that has come forward and said that we need to take care of our citizens, but they are the ones who voted for a policy. They looked at everything going on in the world and they said, "Not here, not today." Montgomery County needs to take that approach as well. We need to be proud to be the home of our nation's capital, where things were founded. We need to be proud of our clear ancestry. We need to understand that immigrants are so very important and they need to feel safe and they need to have the ability to pursue legal immigration status. We need to make sure that they're protected because oftentimes, they are the target of schemes. Oftentimes, they are the victims of crime. And how are they supposed to get the help and support that they need when they are afraid of our police force and also afraid of unidentified police force? We need to push for a welcoming policy. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, we're moving on to Michelle Angarto. Michelle?
Good morning. My name is Michelle Angarto and I live in Lower Salford Township. Total 2025 Monco budgeted expenditures will be $43 million higher than in 2024, and that's an increase of 9%. Wages and benefits are up $33 million this year and are 48% of total expenditures. Not surprising, since Monco government is now the fourth largest employer in the county, behind Merck, Abington Memorial Hospital, and Mainline Hospitals. In 2025, Monco raised property taxes $29 million to offset these expenses. In fact, 2,495 full-time employees and 309 part-time employees work for the county and Health and Human Services makes up almost 37% of all spending. Just since 2022, we have seen Monco commissioners approve a 31% increase in our real estate taxes. Where is the increase in spending? For positions that support DEI, 15 new public defenders, a human relations commission that is redundant to the PA State HRC, increased monies for the correctional facility, Office of Mental Health, and other Health and Human Services. Are these additional expenses really the will of the taxpayers and necessary to running the county? Or is this funding the Democrats' agenda for social justice, wealth redistribution, and generous welfare? I reviewed the past Montgomery County budgets, document center, and commission press releases to find the milit rates for each year since 2002. And in the last nine years of Republican governance, which was 2002 to 2011, the commissioners, Republicans, actually reduced our milit rate by 6.7% over that nine years. There isn't even one year when Republicans increased the milit rate and they handed the Democrats a very low rate of 2.695. Democrats have held two commissioner seats from 2012 to the present, and what did Democrats do? They raised the rate a shocking 17% in their first year, and since 2012, they've increased our milit rate a total of 109.4%. That means they've more than doubled our real estate tax rate, and the increases should enrage all voters. Having managed budgets in the hundreds of millions for a Fortune 500 company myself, I know the challenge of wanting to do too many things with too little money. But in the private sector, we have no choice but to prioritize without sacrificing performance. The Democrats see raising taxes as a substitute for making priority calls to maintain fiscal discipline. These meetings should include a dashboard of measurable results. You owe it to the taxpayers of the county to convince us that the ever-increasing sums of money you're extracting from us is money well spent. There seems to be no end in sight to increasing milit rates for social justice, welfare equity programs, and help for criminals and those accused of crimes. But I challenge the commissioners to slim down the government, reduce the tax rate in the future, as Republicans did, and with no negative impact to your constituents. Thank you.
Okay, next up Caitlin Santos. Caitlin?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Thank you for everything that you do, commissioners. My name is Caitlin Santos. I'm calling from Willow Grove on behalf of my husband and my family in support of adopting a county-wide welcoming policy. As many others have said, it would benefit, of course, our immigrant neighbors and even some of us that are rising up into speaking out and being activists. It also protects our officers as well, because as we have unmasked agents coming in committing clear violations of our due process and Fourth Amendment violations, they're protected under masks. They will get justice, however, and I would like our officers to be protected by us standing together and saying that we will not be complicit in these devious, disgusting actions. Thank you.
Next.
John Vale. John?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is John. I lived in Norristown for about 13 years and I also work at Norristown. I wanted to speak briefly about immigration customs enforcement in Montgomery County. In the act of protecting the United States from illegal immigrants bringing drugs and gangs and rapists into the country, ICE has been, in the past six months at least, aggressively capturing Norristown residents to be sent to private prisons for profit that only shareholders will see the fruits of. ICE detains friendly working Norristown residents that have lived here for 15, 20, sometimes 30 years. The detentions leave behind broken families of children born here with birthright citizenship. In ICE's wake, it's leaving Norristown encumbered with federally mandated broken families and no path to healing them. If anyone thinks there's a crime wave in Norristown now, we will almost certainly be seeing one in the next five to 10 years, maybe sooner. As a result of detentions, the children left behind without moms and dads, at best, may have to be informally adopted into blended families, lest they drop out of school, become susceptible to drug and alcohol addictions, become prey for child sex predators, and carrying the resulting trauma into their adult lives, while being denied proper avenues to manage it. Talk about funding for SNAP benefits drying up right before the winter holidays. Recipients who have never committed a crime before in their life are probably seriously considering it now. I remember people talking about the crime in Norristown pretty much my entire life, long before I even moved in. It's pretty obvious, and there's plenty of data to support this, that many people commit crimes out of desperation. No amount of increased law enforcement will alleviate that. If there's anything that could have been done to intercept the daily ICE detentions in our neighborhoods, by now, it's already way too late. I think Norristown will have to pivot its resources strongly towards mutual aid in the form of community activities and outreach programs, volunteer work, preferably compensated with cooked meals and pipelines into fruitful jobs. I work in Norristown currently, and decisions made by the Trump administration have risen manufacturing and import costs, and in order to not offload those expenses to the customer, my company has had to downsize employees and cut working hours, which makes Norristown a very difficult town to live in. I think Norristown will need loud and aggressive campaigning to pull people in. I'm talking big signage, door-to-door campaigning, brochures. Because I'm a depressed person myself, and I can only imagine what emotional burdens the families of detainees are already carrying on the road. I find it takes an enormous amount of personal effort just to find out about any kind of Norristown and community events long after they've already happened. If there's any work being done to pull the Norristown community together, it's very invisible to me and it needs a lot of support, so it can't be missed. So to summarize, I'm aware that hands are tied when it comes to federal crimes against humanity, but these recent events should be transparently showing us that a reactive approach to crime causes more problems than it solves. And before it's too late, Norristown will be in a lot of danger if we can't take a proactive approach towards pulling the community together and uniting each other through opportunities and mutual aid.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Flor. Jasmine Danny. Flor? Hello? Flor? Okay, we'll move on to the next person. Peggy? Peggy, Peg, can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Peg Idol, I live in Skippack. I'm not sure how to describe how I feel right now. First of all, I would like to thank everyone who has come to the meeting, whether in person or virtually, and shared their feelings. Right now, my heart is breaking. I'm a white woman. I grew up with privilege. And I am sick of what's happening to my neighbors. I grew up in Upper Marion. I know Norristown well. I've seen what's happening, and I'm most concerned about the disinformation. These people who think that the folks being rounded up by masked men and zip-tied are illegals. These are people, most of whom are trying to go through the legal process, many of whom were snatched from the courtroom steps while they were looking to get their hearing. I'm mortified by people who think this is okay. I don't know what's happened to the people of this country, but this is not the America that I served. This is not the America that I want to live in. I'm begging Montgomery County to do the right thing. Pass the welcoming policy. Let's put a stop to this lawlessness, this charade. Poor Stephanie Wu. She did it legally 30 years ago when the process was easy. And she's got brown skin, I'm suspecting. She could be snatched up tomorrow. Then maybe she'll appreciate what some of our neighbors are going through today. Thank you.
Can I just go back to Flor, see if she could? Flor, could you jump on? Are you able to mute?
Flor?
Hi. Normally, the unmute button comes on and it didn't when you had called on me. I don't know what happened. Um, okay. So I just wanted to clarify a few things up, because I think a lot of people don't really understand how the immigration process works. Most immigrants are going through the legal process. They're going through family visas of different kinds. And I just wanted to let everybody know, because clearly, a lot of people are extremely uninformed. Most countries are still processing the petitions from US citizens, like naturalized US citizens that are siblings, from April of 2008 for most countries. Like, let me just put that out there. For India, it's all the way back to October of 2006. For Mexico, it's all the way back to April of 2001. And for the Philippines, it's all the way back to January of 2008. So everybody that's talking about doing things the right way, doing things by the books, how you were able to do it legally and how other people are not, I'm sorry, but you are so uninformed. You are extremely ignorant of how the immigration process works. The fact is, most people do illegally and most ICE agents are picking up people that are doing things the legal way, that are trying to do everything by the books. But literally, listen to the dates that I listed out. April 2001, October 2006, January 2008, April 2008. I'm sorry, what year is it? It's 2025. How many years do you think that it takes to go through the immigration process? All these people, I'm sorry, but you guys really need to learn to learn what you're talking about, because every time some of these people start talking, I just start laughing, because I cannot understand the level of ignorance for some of these people. And I'm sorry, but I can't take anything seriously from people that are saying doing things the right way when they don't even know how the right way, quote-unquote, goes. And I'm talking about literally family petitions right now, one of the most standard ways of getting your citizenship, getting your visa, which is what most people do. Do. So everybody here that's talking about people bringing in criminals, people bringing in this, that, and the third, you are just uninformed. And quite frankly, all of your comments should just be stricken from the record, because they are so beyond the realm of reality.
Is that it? Any other comments? So at some point, we're gonna have to rent it in, because we have nothing to do with federal immigration policy, right? So there's a lot of comments and a lot of things that, you know, we just don't have jurisdiction over here, but you know, I understand, there's a lot of things happening in the world that people want to comment on. We're doing everything we can at the county level on all these fronts, but do you have any closing comments? It's just-
Yeah, I mean, I, this has been, you know, I certainly, I want to encourage people to come and give comment and give voice to the things that are important to our community. That's how our collective kind of hears what we need to be improving on, where we might need to focus. You know, on this immigration topic, I'll reiterate that Montgomery County has done a lot more than any other counties in Pennsylvania. Well, I mean, you could shake your head, but we've done we've done a lot, a lot on our stance on immigration, and so at some point, yes, we're gonna have to just put this to bed, because, you know, we're at a place where we feel good about the things we have done.
Got anything? Yeah. Yeah, I'll just say, look, I've seen what's happening in Norristown. I think it's it feels like it's not the same country that my family is upgraded to, when you see what actions the federal government is taking. But that's gotta be changed through an election, a federal election, right? So I hope we focus on that for people who are feeling the way that they do, because it's not gonna change until we win or change who's in office. Right? Montgomery County has no control over whether ICE comes in and takes people.
You do.
No.
We don't.
We don't. We don't. We don't.
That's not what we're asking. That's, you have absolute control. This, you're being, you're playing naive. You have control.
I'm not naive. First of all, you made your comment. Thank you. Not naive. This is, we already have a requirement that we respond to ICE if they have a judicial warrant. And I thought it was very good that that came with support from law enforcement and people in the community because they understand that, you know, we're pursuing a system and the rule of law generally, which is also something that is being undermined right now at the federal level, which I've acknowledged. And that's what we can do, right? Elections have consequences, and, you know, it would be great if people focus on that reality because we still do have a fundamental right to vote, for now. And that's where we have to put our focus if our issues are at the federal level. So our upcoming board meeting date is Thursday, November 13th, 2025, 10:00 AM here in this boardroom. Is there a motion to adjourn the October 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned. We'll move on to the salary board. And bring up our controller, deputy controllers, our controllers here, our heart. Any public comment on salary board? Tony Brewer, our Chief Human Resources Officer, go ahead.
Good afternoon, members of the salary board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the salary board list. It is a four-page document dated October 23rd, 2025, with a timestamp of 12:28 PM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for, for your consideration.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the October 23rd, 2025 salary board presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brewer, the Chief Human Resources Officer?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wynder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Controller Hart. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the October 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
Seconded up.
Seconded by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned.